Seventeenth, I'd like to call it the order. This is the ceremonial common council meeting. This first part is more ceremonial. There's no business that will take place. Anything that's comments and suggestions and things like that from constituents will be done in the second part of the meeting. So, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It has been appropriately noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
Let's please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Zwort.
Here.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
He's out.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Okay, there's the comments and suggestions from citizens. This is, I'm not going to call the blue cards at this time. This is just for the ceremonial part if anybody wants to. This is normally what happens if an alderman or a mayor is leaving, then we would have a discussion, but since no one's leaving, we'll continue. Reports and comments from the aldermen? Seeing none. Reports and comments from the mayor? None at this time. So, we will adjourn, sign, die. Do we have to have a motion for that?
Yes.
A motion to adjourn, sign, die? So moved?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski. Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we'll have the ceremonial public swearing-in of newly-elected officials.
If Alderman Zwort would come forward, and Alderman Stray, and Alderman Rosick, and Alderman Shaw, please.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Mayor Gold, please come up.
Please come up.
Congratulations. You will raise your right hand. You just raised your support contestation in the United States. The competition is scaled to ten, and basically has parts to do with the auditors, which is ineligible, and that is Alderman Zwort, District One, Alderman Stray, District Two, Alderman Rosick, District Three, and Alderman Shaw, District Four. To the best of your ability, so help you God.
I love it.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Congratulations for your election. Congratulations. Mayor Gold, please come up.
I'm here.
Can you raise your right hand? You just raised your support contestation in the United States. The competition is scaled to ten, and basically has parts to do with the auditors, which is ineligible, and that is Alderman Zwort, District One, Alderman Stray, District Two, Alderman Rosick, District Three, and Alderman Shaw, District Four. To the best of your ability, so help you God.
I love it.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Congratulations for your election. Congratulations. Mayor Gold, please come up.
I'm here.
Can you raise your right hand? You just raised your support contestation in the United States. The competition is scaled to ten, and basically has parts to do with the auditors, which is ineligible, and that is Alderman Zwort, District One, Alderman Stray, District Two, Alderman Rosick, District Three, and Alderman Shaw, District Four. To the best of your ability, so help you God.
I love it.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Congratulations for your election. Congratulations. Mayor Gold, please come up.
I'm here.
Can you raise your right hand? You just raised your support contestation in the United States. The competition is scaled to ten, and basically has parts to do with the auditors, which is ineligible, and that is Alderman Zwort, District One, Alderman Stray, District Two, Alderman Rosick, District Three, and Alderman Shaw, District Four. To the best of your ability, so help you God.
I love it.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Congratulations for your election. And congratulations. Mayor Gold, please come up.
I'm here.
Can you raise your right hand?
You just raised your support contestation in the United States.
The competition is scaled to ten, and basically has parts to do with the auditors, which is ineligible, and that is Alderman Zwort, District One, Alderman Stray, District Two, Alderman Rosick, District Three, and Alderman Shaw, District Four. To the best of your ability, so help you God.
I love it.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Congratulations for your election.
And congratulations. Mayor Gold, please come up.
I'm here.
Can you raise your right hand? You just raised your support contestation in the United States. The competition is scaled to ten, and basically has parts to do with the auditors, which is ineligible, and that is Alderman Zwort, District One, Alderman Stray, District Two, Alderman Rosick, District Three, and Alderman Shaw, District Four.
To the best of your ability, so help you God.
I love it.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Congratulations for your election. And congratulations. Mayor Gold, please come up.
I'm here.
Can you raise your right hand?
You just raised your support contestation in the United States.
The competition is scaled to ten, and basically has parts to do with the auditors, which is ineligible, and that is Alderman Zwort, District One, Alderman Stray, District Two, Alderman Rosick, District Three, and Alderman Shaw, District Four.
To the best of your ability, so help you God.
I love it.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Congratulations for your election.
And congratulations.
I'm here.
Can you raise your right hand?
You just raised your support contestation in the United States.
The competition is scaled to ten, and basically has parts to do with the auditors, which is ineligible, and that is Alderman Zwort, District One, Alderman Stray, District Two, Alderman Rosick, District Three, and Alderman Shaw, District Four.
To the best of your ability, so help you God.
I love it.
Wonderful.
Project up, you know, as a, to compete against a nonprofit that doesn't pay any state tax, doesn't pay any federal tax, doesn't pay the school tax, doesn't pay the county tax. They're gonna do this thing with the city where they pay a city tax, but they have an unfair economic advantage compared to us. And so we, you have to make a business decision. I know these decisions aren't easy. We have to make a business decision, and I'm not saying we're threatening to back out of our project, but as we move forward, you know, we have to raise four million dollars in private equity to build our project. And to go to investors, you know, first of all, put my own money on the line. Second of all, go to investors, knowing that we're gonna be going head to head against the project we weren't aware of when we came into the city to buy that parcel, is gonna have to make us rethink whether we can actually compete against a nonprofit from out of state who has an unfair economic advantage to us. And they can, because of their balance sheet, they can build some overcapacity and have negative revenue or negative income on the site for, for extended period of time. As a private investor, we can't afford to do that. So I just don't think the timing is, there's no need to annex property for a nonprofit for a use that the city doesn't need extra capacity at this time. Maybe two years from now it would be appropriate, once some of the other projects are completed and filled up. But to just, I, I just don't like the idea of, of the nonprofits. It's, and I've talked to the state legislators, some, our legislators, and they, it's not even on their radar. Where you have these out of state companies, like Shore Haven is involved in the community. Presbyterian Homes has no ties to this community. They're a Minnesota company, coming in here and willing to do what they can do to undercut, to get their 200-unit project up in the short term. I don't see how it helps the city long-term. Maybe as we have an aging population, the demand might be there. But I strongly consider you to, to deny that. As us as investors, if you do approve it, we have to make a business decision too. And we respect that, you know, we either have to go to our investors and see if they still wanna be part of it, or do we go to a nonprofit and try to come back and do ours as a nonprofit? Or do we just move on and, and back out? I don't know what the decision will be, or maybe we just move forward. Maybe we do move forward, maybe it works with both projects, but it's, it's gonna be very difficult. So I thank you for your consideration and for your difficulty and the decisions you have to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Testman?
Thank you. I also am speaking about the annexation, and I really question that it even comes up in front of the council again anyway. It was basically turned down once before, and it should be turned down again. The property that is supposedly being annexed is an island piece of property. It's, it's not really connected in any way with the city. And everything to the south of Lisbon Road, the city has nothing, no contact at all, until you get three blocks west of the bypass. And it just does not belong there. And the other major thing is that this is a, a property that is really a commercial property, not residential. And the whole area is all residential. And the, there's already too much traffic on Lisbon Road, and this would make it even worse. In effect, you're gonna end up with a hotel. You're gonna have employees, you're gonna have traffic, and it just does not belong there. If this building is built anyplace, it should be done in a, a, a area that is zoned commercial now, not change something like this into commercial use. And I would encourage the, the council to turn it down again, and it would make everybody in our area very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Dina? Is it Rittman? Ritzman?
Thank you. I'm here with AJ's Pub. I'm just gonna piggyback off of some of the things that they had said about the beer garden at the Village Green. Right now, all we have, I think the max is 10 spot parking spots, and those are taken immediately and normally not even by our own patrons. They're, they're completely full. So when our bartenders come in, they have to park far away. And when we close at 2:00, 2:30 in the morning, it's becomes a safety issue. So again, we're looking at a Friday and a Saturday for the, the beer garden, which causes a concern for them, you know, they're having to park far away late at night. They covered pretty much everything. My other concern is if you're gonna look at 500 to 1,000 people and only have two porta potties, it becomes a logistics issue. So then where are they gonna go? They're gonna go into, you know, the, either Lakers or AJ's Pub. And, you know, we just can't handle that kind of volume for something that's not our event, basically. And then I know, I believe I had heard that we can bring coolers into the parks, and that's another concern of mine. So let's say, you know, you guys are saying we're only gonna sell a high-end craft beer for a higher price than any of the bars, but who's to stop people from bringing their own liquor in or their own booze in? And that takes away from our establishments as well. You know, so I think the idea of a beer garden is not a bad idea, but maybe putting it somewhere that can facilitate that amount of people with more parking and bathrooms and stuff like that. That way, you're still bringing people into the town for a good reason, but not taking away directly from the downtown business area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on to regular business. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda are licenses. A resolution granting a six-month Class B for men and malt beverage license to RNS Hospitality Buddy's Beach Bungalow at City Beach. Resolution adding the combining wards for elections, Ward 14, and the treasurer's report. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw.
Hi.
Alderman Ellis.
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt.
Hi.
Alderman Zwort.
Hi.
Alderman Stray.
Hi.
Alderman Kavieski.
Hi.
Alderman Miller.
Hi.
Alderman Rosick.
Hi.
Moving on to committee reports. Protection and welfare, the first item. The resolution on, or the ordinance change for restraint of pit bulls has gone back to committee and will not be discussed tonight. Next item is, yeah. The next item is Consider Act and Resolution granting three temporary Class B retailers licenses to Downtown Economic Business Association. This is about the beer gardens. So we need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
John, you wanna?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Thank you for those who came out to share their comments tonight. It's always helpful in our decision process. I'd like to provide a little bit of background for the council and, and the members that are here from our community today. The beer garden concept began discussion probably, well, 18 months ago within the community. And staff, city staff, our Parks, Recreation, Forestry Department was given direction to do some research. We went out and discussed with various communities that currently are hosting beer gardens. Those included Waukesha County Parks and Land Use, the city of Pewaki, city of Waukesha, Village of Heartland, and then the Monominee Falls Business Improvement District. After reviewing of this, their success, peaks, valleys, the different components that go into the beer garden process, the concept was then brought forward to the Parks and Recreation Commission to discuss and get direction. At that time, the commission authorized staff to reach out to the Downtown Business Association to see if they would have interest in holding a beer garden at a specific location, which they identified as the Village Green at that time. So staff met with DOBA presidents. They then proceeded to meet with their membership based on what they've shared with me to date. And they ultimately put a proposal together to offer a beer garden on three different weekends. Those weekends include the following dates. June 15th and 16th, July 13th and 14th, and August 18th and 19th at various times depending on the weekend. This obviously went to committee of the whole two weeks ago for discussion. Came back tonight with the application for the Class B picnic license for the events. So at this time, I'd like to open it up for questions. We do have the DOBA representatives, Tom and Lori are here. If somebody has any questions for them that they could respond to. Thank you, Mayor.
I do have a question before we get started. This is for the licenses only. You also have a permitting process for the use of the facility?
Yes, we do. Any special event that occurs on a public park is, goes through a special event process that is managed via the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department. We then have, they fill out an application, which they have done. That application will be reviewed by staff and approved for the use of the space. The Class B licensing that the council has to approve gives them the authority or the opportunity to provide the beer sales at the site.
Just wanted to make sure that was known. We'll open up for discussion. Matt?
John, during our Committee of the Whole meeting, you had several other stats that you gave us on parking. I know parking's been a concern. I did receive a call on parking. I, I'm not completely convinced that, you know, parking is always an issue. We do have large events that host a lot of folks, and I always think if you're driving around looking for a spot, that means it's busy and active, and it's, can be a good thing. But how many spots do we have right now downtown?
On the, the most recent map that was developed by city staff, in the downtown area, there are 841 stalls.
Any more? No?
Maybe later.
Okay. Mike?
John, is, are two enough, are two porta potties gonna be enough? I mean, five to 1,000 in the weekend, but...
Yeah, that's a fair question. We, we have a ratio process that we require special events for the number of porta potties based on capacities and crowd sizes. So if, they're predicting the size could be up to 1,000. We, we don't know exactly yet. Until you try it, you don't know what the outcome is. We would probably overemphasize additional porta potties for the first one, and then evaluate the attendance levels, and we'd allow them to adapt if necessary. But clearly, the intent for any special event, whether it's a beer garden, German Christmas market, any other event that takes place, we want the porta potties to meet the demands and needs of the people attending, so they're not impacting businesses. We'd also are, realize that that's not gonna prevent somebody from going from a business, but they have to provide enough so people can use them outside.
And this is just for the, for, we're just doing this for, based on 2018? We're just a trial deal, and if...
This, this particular request is for the three weekends that I identified earlier. And this entire beer garden process would be evaluated, if approved, at the end of the season for, probably a report back to the council for how it went, pros and cons, things of that nature.
And then it'd come back if we were...
They would have to reapply next year.
Thank you.
Lou?
You mentioned that you had a, a needs assessment that was done that hasn't formally been presented, but there are some stats within that that might pertain to this particular type of event. Can you share that with council?
Yes, I can, Lou, thank you. So the needs assessment process, so everybody understands how that took place. There was a consultant that was hired. They do a random sampling mailing throughout the community. They sent it to over 1,000 homes. We had over 400 homes respond to the, to the survey, which makes it statistically valid. There's a ratio that you must meet. One of the questions that we had asked is, along with many others, is please rank the following components. And there was a full list of them, but specifically beer garden was one of those components. So you could be ranked as high priority, medium priority, low priority, or not a priority. And there was 22% high, 23% medium, so 55% medium to high, and then 45% low to not a priority.
Tom?
Where's the approximate of these 832 parking stalls, John?
I apologize. I should've brought an overhead to share with you. Let me just pull up the map here. I have it in my packet. So the, the lots that are included in this, and I know you can't see it, but just to show that we actually have it, this includes everything from the campus lot down by First Bank across from the community center, includes City Beach Lot, continues all the way to the east through the back of City Hall, back here. Also includes all the lots around the library, includes the south lot, the small lot across from the post office. There's a small lot across the street from the library, so that entire vicinity. And then to the north, it goes from Veteran Park down to the Village Green, et cetera. So it's everything in the downtown area.
There's 832 there?
841.
Jeff?
Wow.
Does that include street parking?
No. This is specific stalls in the identified lots. And I'm confident, I think this, this map may even be on the city website, if people are looking for it. If not, I can make it available.
How many additional street spots are there? Approximately?
That's a big area, Mayor. I, I, I'm almost reluctant to answer. I'm guessing.
Another 100 spots, maybe?
You think 200 mark in that vicinity? Okay.
So we got basically 1,000 spots, if you round it down.
Yeah, look, I mean, parking can be a concern. We, we have, for the folks that are in the audience, looked into parking. One of the things we talked about years ago, and it has been talked about for probably decades, is putting in a structure behind the Avenue Square Mall there. And, you know, the numbers that come in, just to repair it are high, and make it look really nice is high. But to, to put in stalls, I think it was 15,000 or $20,000 per stall. And, and that's a huge tax burden to add, you know, 100 stalls. And so we are, you know, you want a vibrant downtown, and, you know, maybe in certain events, people will just drive away. But, I don't know, we've never had, and, and I, I have four kids with a minivan. We've never, in any event, including German Christmas market, you know, if you spend a little while driving around, you usually can kind of find a spot. But I, I'm ultimately, my other comment is, I'm ultimately gonna be in favor of this. I think a downtown wants to be vibrant. I think you wanna bring people to your downtown. So if you put this in Roosevelt, which I'm not necessarily against either, if it went there, but if you put it out that far, you're not gonna bring that foot traffic to downtown. All the downtowns that I've ever gone to around the country that are successful have a vibrant downtown, active downtown. Because the downtown's not just for the downtown business owners. The downtown is for everyone in the city, so everyone can enjoy it. Not everyone can live on the lake, not everyone can enjoy a beer on the lake. So we have this great park that we created, and we're basically, right now, not using it. So for me, this is at least a good shot across the bow, see how it works. You know, maybe the business owners will be surprised that they have actually increased foot traffic after nine. I think one of the other things we did to make sure that there would be no impact is no food. So, look, if someone comes and has a beer or two, and they get hungry, they can't eat there. They're not gonna have hot dogs or brats or any of that stuff. They're gonna go somewhere else. On a Friday night, they're gonna go for a fish fry. So I, you know, again, I'm not a downtown business owner, but I know folks out where I live would enjoy coming downtown at noon or 1:00 and sitting by the lake and maybe throwing in a fishing line and having a beer. And I think that gives them the opportunity. Again, only three times a year.
Lou?
With parking being one of the primary concerns, and DOBA being willing to step up to, to have this type of activity, I'm curious to see if DOBA would go to their membership to see if their employees could possibly park off-site and, and, and have transportation in to free up those stalls that would normally be occupied by employees? That would eliminate some of the parking concerns? And as we talk about this as a pilot or a test program, if parking is really an issue, and we free up those stalls, maybe it makes it more successful and more welcoming. If it's, if it doesn't have a lot of people attend to the event, we're still freeing up stalls for the businesses that maybe aren't DOBA members for, for participating in, in a dinner at SoVie's or wherever it may be. But that might be a way for everybody to kind of win on this and, and move it forward. With parking being the primary driver of concern, is that something that maybe we can at least get entertained?
I, I think that's up to the DOBA members to decide how they wanna do that. And I agree that employees should not be parking as close to buildings. I understand if 2:00 in the morning, when you gotta go get your car, that's a little difficult, but... I've worked at places where you parked as far away as possible before you, you know, as an employee. You didn't park it close. You parked far away. Alderman Shaw?
Yeah, for me, this is more than just a parking issue. I do feel a responsibility to the downtown business owners that are already in the business of selling alcoholic beverages or food or things like that. And I think taking three weekends like this out of their summer is a lot. So I am gonna be opposed to the way this is written up right now. If this was gonna be somewhere other than downtown, somewhere where there aren't other businesses, I could be persuaded to be, you know, have a different opinion. But for this to be right downtown like this on the Village Green, I just don't see that that's a good place for this.
And one thing I wanna point out too, if you look at the resolution, the licensing does not specifically say it's downtown. It's licensing for those three weekends.
Understood, but that's what we've been led to believe, is that's where this would be held.
That's up to the park, that's, that's why I asked if there was a second, separate process, which I knew there was a separate process, which is the location, so... Jeff?
Yeah, I was on Parks and, or I am on Parks and Rec Board also, and was involved in a lot of the discussions. And to me, this goes back to a previous time when I worked for the city. But when, back in the 80s and early 90s, we talked about our downtown, and we had a downtown plan. And we said, we, the only way for us to get businesses full is to have a lot of foot traffic. And that meant adding condos and apartments, which a lot of people in the community don't like, and I get that. But to support the businesses downtown, you have to have those kinds of buildings. If you're gonna put in condos and apartment buildings downtown, you also have to provide certain activities and amenities. That's the restaurants, that's the bars, it's the park. When we talked about buying a particular restaurant and completing that park, one of my comments at that time was, that was kind of the city's part in this overall development to try to bring people downtown, to get families downtown. Going back then to the Parks and Rec Board, one of the things that we talked about was the fact that if we were gonna have a beer garden, it had to be done in a way where it did not detract, or hopefully did not detract from any of the downtown businesses, but rather where downtown businesses, either through direct participation or through some marketing or whatever, could run some specials and participate to try to draw some of the people that hopefully will come down for this. And this again is a, is to draw families downtown. It's going, they're gonna have games, they're gonna have many other activities in the park as part of this. It's not a bunch of people just sitting around drinking beer all day. And so when we look at bringing the families down, again, there is no food. Where are they gonna eat it? They're gonna eat in the restaurants. As we get more and more restaurants, it's going to be more important for us to continue to draw people downtown to eat there and, and to utilize those other spaces. So, you know, everything that I've heard is, well, this is gonna hurt us. I would argue that it's an opportunity to really help the downtown businesses, and it promotes some of the foot traffic and the downtown activity that we're going to need. One last point I wanted to make regarding parking is the fact that the city does realize that there is a parking issue. We are going to, within a year or so, move the police department out of the downtown. And I believe we said that that would free up another 30, 30 spaces.
36, I think, yeah.
Spaces generally in the area around City Hall here. And that was also one of the motivations for actually moving them away from this site or building a new police department down in this area, because it is, it is parking intensive, especially on Fridays when court's in session. So I, I get all those other arguments, but I, I would encourage people to look at it as an opportunity, not as an issue, not as a problem.
Lou?
Can you provide some information in regards to who, who attends these beer gardens? Are we expecting more people from out of the city that would come in to enjoy the city? City residents that may not normally come downtown? Or are we kind of gleaning off of typical foot traffic that would go into an existing business? And now they're gonna drop their money at the beer garden and go away?
I, I think that it's very difficult to determine exactly where people are gonna come from for these. When I speak with the other providers of beer gardens, they don't track where people are coming from. They track volume. So I, I would, I would tend to believe that people that are coming to Oconomowoc for other downtown-style events, Ball Fest, German Market, et cetera, are in tune to what's happening in our community. So there's a small region, I guess, that's familiar with Oconomowoc. And I would anticipate that that's the same clientele that would probably attend a beer garden. I don't envision people driving here from Milwaukee or Madison to attend something like this.
But ultimately, it'd be a net plus as opposed to just a redistribution of what would be here normally?
Potentially.
Derek?
When, when I was approached about a beer garden, I envisioned it as a, an area where people gathered but could wander around downtown with open intoxicants and visit different establishments, all the businesses in the downtown, not just the taverns or the restaurants. I believe there's a lot more businesses than just taverns and restaurants that would like to see some foot traffic. So I don't envision this as a gated-in area with porta potties that people are gonna sit around and drink and not go see other businesses. In fact, I would encourage it to be open, so that if you wanted to go to another place, go to the bathroom and grab a beer there, you might stay for a while. I don't know, I just, I think, like Jeff said, it's an opportunity to get new customers and, and for all the businesses to thrive. I think the parking will work its way out. You could have, if it really is that congested, that's a good thing. You could have shuttles from, from the new building we just bought. There's a big parking lot there. It's a little bit further than most people wanna walk, but we've got about three acres of parking there. So I just, I just think if you advertise, maybe we can allow them, we should have everybody be able to advertise in that park during the event, specials, give out coupons or whatever. Anything you can do to, to make money. I guess I just think it's, it's, it's not just taverns and restaurants in our downtown. It's all the businesses.
My only other comment is Munich has state-owned beer halls. I mean, Munich has beer halls and beer gardens right in their downtown and around all their parks in downtown, including in their city center. And some of them are actually owned full-time by the folks. I mean, one of our sister cities is a German city. You know, these, these things are...
They have that.
Yeah, that's what they do. And it, it is, it's not the, the concept of a bunch of, I don't know, 21-year-olds sitting around drinking. It's, it is family-oriented because of the times that are selected. You, you're going for a lake walk, you're going fishing, you grab a beer, you stay for dinner. I mean, that's kind of the concept. And I think to ignore the fact that this happens in other countries and that people enjoy it is silly, and I think we should at least give it a shot. You know what? Maybe it turns into a, you know, maybe it's a problem, and, and then we'll revisit it. That's why we're not doing this for permanent. That's why we didn't build a tent there permanently or some type of pavilion to do this every weekend for all summer. You know, we're taking a shot at it. And my understanding is one of the weekends is festival week.
Yes, yeah.
So there's a lot of activity, and hopefully, maybe this will actually draw some more people to downtown from Fowler Lake, because otherwise, people just stay there the whole time. So I, I, I think it's an interesting concept, especially during that weekend, so...
Like, that was my comment also. I think, I mean, we've got a, we don't know what it's gonna bring to us, so let's try it for a year and see how it goes. It's only three shots at it, so let's see what it brings us and see if, if there's any problems.
Well, I've listened to a lot of stuff here. I'm gonna track this stuff right at the Dome of People. When they came to us the first time, they said they only had one member that was opposed to this beer garden. And I'm looking at this here, there are six. And they were mentioning earlier in our meeting that there was one, and I'm not gonna embarrass anybody, that said that they were on their side, and I'm looking at here, and they spoke tonight. So that's not a good thing in my mind. Being in this business like I have been all my life, weekends, Friday and Saturday night, 78% of business is made on Friday and Saturday night. We have a unique situation here in Wisconsin because we got something called Fish Fry. That's a lot, a lot of cash that they're gonna lose out in, in six times. Now, the other night, you think they had anybody out? You know, don't forget of all the weather situations that go on here all the time for restaurants. People don't wanna walk. Fit guys like Bob Duffy does, because that's all he says, talks about this point, is that he walks. But, you know, it, the parking is a issue. And their, their normal customers won't be able to get down here this, that night, right? And then now they'll go, and, and their biggest problem is they don't want, people come in and use their bathrooms and leave. The pub, AJ's, Lakers, martini bar, and their other events. Dome of People makes some great events, but they're always done, they're over by 4:00 in the afternoon. The Winter Fest. And as far as the German market, like I mentioned in, in committee, German market is a great thing. Everybody loves it. Now, it's in, it's on a weekend that there's really no business in the restaurants and bars anyway. It's Thanksgiving. really no business in the restaurants and bars anyway. It's Thanksgiving. And I mentioned to John, you know, John said he hasn't had a problem with the rec center. We own that rec center. That brings, that's supposed to bring revenue for us. There's four times that there's something going on at the rec center that, other than six days. That's going to chop up a couple hundred cars right there. And I said to him, you know, the bad thing about it, when, when they can't find a place to park, they're going to talk about not being able to come back and rent the facilities to other people. The Roosevelt thing, I, I think is a great deal. A lot of people would be in favor of doing that there. It's just to me, you know, that, that the revenue loss that these, these businesses that we have to protect because they pay. You heard Lynn talk about, you know, what their overhead is, plus, plus the taxes and, and the fee they have to pay every year for their license, and some of these licenses are ten thousand dollars. You just throw away because people, if they can't find a place to park. We, we sat there for years and watched them leave Spinnakers because there was enough parking back then, and head out to Schweifels, going all over the place. There's a building right, right down the street called Eagle's Landing. They had, they had another person that possibly were going to rent the restaurant out, and they heard about what's going on down here. They walked away from it. They're having problems getting somebody to do a restaurant because of fact, there's no friggin' parking. And we're going to go and do this? And again, I mentioned, I says, I'd never walked away from a beer I didn't like. And I'm all on that side of having a few, you know, but, you know, there's a time when, when we got to sit here and look and protect our businesses instead of bringing in all this other, other, it, it, it just bon, bon dles me, guys and gals, you know? Opening tox tents and all the rest of that stuff that goes on. Man, I, I don't know.
Kevin?
I believe that I was at least voted on here because people realize that I understand as a business owner. I think as councilman, I try and do my best, and think we all try to do our best, to bring outside people into the community. It's an important thing because it's, it's the way that our businesses will thrive. I can say that since, at least the last two years anyway, I've seen an upsurge in the amount of traffic in the downtown area, which has made me smile. However, I don't believe that this beer garden should be in the middle of the town, in the middle of the city. We've got areas that are being underutilized, that I feel could benefit from such an event. Now, besides my personal reasons and why I am not going to vote for it, I don't believe that, especially with the downtown, in the way it is, in the shape that it is right now, that this just, I just think the timing is off. And then come to find that there's, there's only going to be two porta-potties. Now, in a good way, that could open the doors to a lot of businesses, and people will go in to utilize their facilities. But I'm thinking that if this were in any other place, I might consider it for a minute, but not where it is.
Any other comments? Let them.
Well, you know, that's the thing about, you know, talking about going into these places just for the bathrooms and leaving, there's a few people that are going to be locking their doors to do that. Elrad at the pub said that if this goes through, the shingles will be out in his place. He's going to sell. He says he just can't keep up with all the other stuff there, so.
Any other comments?
Seeing none, we have a motion, and the second on the floor, to grant the resol, or, what was it? Act on a resolution granting the three temporary Class B retailers' licenses to Doba. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw?
Nay.
Alderman Ellis?
Nay.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski?
Nay.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
I have a couple of comments before I vote. A lot of these businesses downtown that, remember, that have been around for a number of years. Recall back ten years ago when we had double-digit vacancies, we had no business, we had no traffic. We had plenty of parking because nobody was here. And I think it's important now to, to realize that most of these businesses now are doing much better than they were back then. I don't think anybody complains about the fact that their businesses are packed on Friday nights and Saturday nights. And parking is at a premium, but it is still, we've done what we can to provide more. Again, this is a temporary thing. This is something that's going to be for three weekends this summer. If it works, great. If it doesn't work, well, something we'll reconsider next year. So, I'm voting aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on, Public Services. Consider Act on Resolution Accepting Assignment and Assumption of Railroad Passenger Shelter Lease. We need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second. John, you're on it.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm going to give a, a brief history so people are in tune to how we got to where we are today, in, in the shortest version as possible. But this, the train, passenger train station is located just south of Maxim's Restaurant. It's been a longtime structure in the city, digs back to the late eighteen hundreds, was used in a variety of different capacities, from mail being dropped off, passengers being picked up, and so on, over the many, many years. As time progressed, the use of that by the train company diminished, but the structure was historical. People recognized it for what it was and what it represented for the community. The Oconomowoc Historical Society, encouraged sharing is here, who submitted the initial request, signed a lease to maintain and keep that structure in a historical manner. As time has passed and additional maintenance requirements have arose, with new shingles being needed, some support brace work being done, the Historical Society in two thousand and sixteen, sixteen, requested to the city council for the city to take over the lease, assuming the railroad would be open to that option. At that time, the common council indicated that staff should pursue the railroad department to see if that was possible. And over the last sixteen, eighteen months, it's been a strenuous process. We finally got to where we are today. So, the railroad company has a assumption and assignment agreement that the city can sign or approve this evening, which would allow the city to take over the lease agreement, which is a hundred and twenty-five dollars for over a five-year period, starting in two thousand and twenty-two. It's paid up until that point. We would be responsible then to do some basic maintenance. As I indicated earlier, we want to roof replace the shingles. We want to look at some cross-support beam replacement, as well as some gable and fascia work. This is a material cost only. The intent was for city staff to do it. In committee, there were some good suggestions from members indicating that maybe we can connect this to an Eagle Skull project, the high school shop class, some other things. So, we'll explore those options to get the labor piece done, to maybe save on city staff. But long and short of it is, it's an assumption and assignment, assignment and assumption, excuse me, lease, and there's a resolution for your consideration tonight.
Thank you. Any discussion? Do we have a motion? We don't have a motion. We do have a motion.
Yes, we do.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the assignment of the railroad passenger shelter lease. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Okay, under Plan Commission, first item is Consider Act on Ordinance to amend the planned development, PD nine dash zero six, for Village Crossing, two condominiums located at the southwest corner of Valley Road and Village Lane. This is to give the ordinance its first reading.
So moved. Second.
Jason already gave us a, information of what this is. This just basically changes the, the ordinance to amend, to amend the planned development, kind of back to the original. It was at fifty-six, it went down to thirty, fifty-six units, which would have been twenty-eight buildings. Then it went up to thirty-nine buildings, which would have been single. And now it's back down to twenty-six buildings, but with duplexes. These are high-end condominium units. Each one is valued, each, each condominium itself is valued around four hundred thousand dollars. So, these are, are high-end developments, so. Do you have any comments?
Seeing none, we have a motion, the second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw?
Did you have a comment first? I have a, I have a question. Why, why are they doing this again now? What's the purpose? Why are they going back?
Because they have duplex units there now, south of, in the southern part, below Gold Medal Drive. And this basically makes it the same all the way through the whole development.
So, it's a continuity thing, or is it because?
Yeah, there's a new developer that has taken ownership of this land, and, and he would like to make it more compatible with the surrounding area. The surrounding area is, is all duplexes, and he feels a single family would not be compatible. It'd be, it would be very similar to the character of the other units existing.
And what is this going to do to our percentage of single homes as compared to dual resident?
It brings the single-family percentage down about point six of a percent, overall percentage-wise. It, it, it does lower the amount of single families and increases the amount of duplexes, but pretty, a pretty slight decrease.
Yeah, it's still at sixty-three point two percent. Okay, Matt?
Yeah, just, I, I live across the street, obviously. I, I've heard no comments. Most of, most of the things I have heard have been positive. I think the reason they're doing this is they're selling, like, hotcakes. I mean, they're, they're building, like, a new one, it seems like, every other day there, in the existing ones that we've already approved around the pond. And they're really nice, great neighbors. So, I, I, out in my district, we have no problem with it. It's, I think it's a great development, brings more, if you want development in the Paps Farms area, putting it, you know, these units in with those high values is huge. We'll get, you know, other stuff that'll come in because of that.
And, and one comment I have on this, it's, I look at the multifamily, single-family split, you know, of what percentage is that? I look at four hundred thousand dollar condominiums. I don't think that is multifamily. I think that is, each is a tax key. Each one is an owned property. Just because they're two built, or two, two units that are built together, I think we have to look at that and, and how do, how do we differentiate those buildings from not being single family, because that's what they are, basically, so. But that's for another discussion. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Moving on, Consider Act on Extraterritorial Certified Survey Map, located at North sixty-eight, West thirty-seven, eight fifty, County Trunk K, in the town of Oconomowoc. We need a motion to approve the extraterritorial certified survey map.
So moved.
Second.
Jason, why don't you just stay up here?
We get you a chair next time.
The next three are for you.
Sure, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you wanted reports on these. We have several extraterritorial plating items before the common council. All these came through the Plan Commission with positive recommendations. The city has a three-mile plating jurisdiction, which means when, when a development outside of the city limits divides their property by either a certified survey map or a subdivision plat, the city does have the rights to review the land division. This first one on the agenda is for Oconomowoc Landscape Supply, Terry Van Laer. It's on County Trunk Highway K. This is something that the city also, we previously approved this in two thousand and eleven. They're just reconfiguring some properties. There was a house that burned down many years ago, and that's being combined into the business property, and then they are dividing off the agricultural land that has access off of Mallard Drive, and that is for Terry to keep for personal use. So, it is a certified survey map that basically reconfigures some lots in the town of Oconomowoc.
Thank you, Jason. Any comments? Seeing none? Do we have a motion? We have a motion, the second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Next item is Consider Act on Extraterritorial Survey, Certified Survey Map, located at, in North fifty-five, West thirty-seven, one eighty-three Harvard Street in the town of Oconomowoc. We need a motion to approve the extraterritorial certified survey map.
So moved. Second.
This certified survey map is in the town of Oconomowoc on Harvard Street, as mentioned. It's only about two hundred feet from the city limits. It contains one existing house, and they would like to divide that property into two, to create one new buildable lot that would be fifty-eight feet in width. The current lot has a private onsite well and private onsite septic system. The lot being created would also be served by private systems of both well and septic. It has been perked out. The Plan Commission did review this and recommends approval to the council to approve.
Any questions or comments?
Are, are all the other lots around here on septic and well water as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Kevin?
And this plot of land is in the town?
Yes.
It's part of the Oconomowoc Heights subdivision, and some of those lots are, are in the town. On my cover sheet of the report, there's a, a green line. That is the division of the city versus the town.
Everything, at one point, everything east of Lapham was in the town, west of Lapham was in the city. But those on Lapham that have had failing sewer systems, septic systems over the years have annexed into the city. That's why that mortar looks a little jagged now.
Okay, is that why it is standing?
Yeah, but if you're more than, if you're not contiguous, you're not going to get service.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion, the second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Next item is Consider Act on Extraterritorial Subdivision Plat for property located at southeast corner of Brown Street, which is Highway P, and Snyder Lane in the town of Oconomowoc. We need a motion to approve the extraterritorial subdivision.
So moved. Second.
This is a subdivision plat that you're being asked to vote on. It contains seventy-one lots on approximately eighty acres of, of land. The lots are just under an acre in, in size. Some of them may exceed an acre. There's access off Snyder Lane. The Plan Commission didn't review this. They recommended in favor of it. They talked about access, improvements to Snyder Lane, improvements to the intersection. And in the end, they did recommend approval. They do, every lot does front on a public street, and there is stormwater management being taken care of. We felt that this is a good use of, of the property. Recommend a approval.
Like Jason, questions? Or Kevin?
Is this one in the city?
Nope.
No.
Extraterritorial always in the town. Charlie?
Yeah, has the town approved this? That was my next question.
Not yet.
It seems weird that we would be approving it before them. Is that normal?
No, it's really whether we object or not.
Okay.
I don't know when the last subdivision was in the town. There's, you know, I don't think there's a process of who, who has to approve it first, but.
Kevin?
Can, Stan, can you elaborate more on that? What do you mean by?
Okay, so this is not in the city. It's in your extraterritorial area. Unless you have a real, really good reason why you don't want to let the town do what they want to do, you just let it go. Because we don't control the town.
Right.
So, you'd have to actually, probably in order to have a legitimate reason to not approve this, have something in your extraterritorial plan that would give you a reason not to, you know, to object, to object. And you, I don't know of any reason in your extraterritorial plan that would give you a reason not to, you know, to object, to object. And you, I And I don't know of any reason in your extraterritorial plan that will give you a reason to object.
The property is not planned to ever come into the city. There was a time when we did talk, there was a time when we, the area out by Pigley-Wigley, just to the north of there, the old Mackenzie, Newburg Farm, when it was first developed, and they wanted to develop on septic. So it would have been an extraterritorial survey, or certified survey map, and the city rejected it because it was in our plans to have that in the city. It was in our sewer service territory at that time. This is not.
Yeah, so Stan, what you're saying is there's, unless we have something in our plan, we can't reject this? For instance, in my head, I'm looking at this project and wondering why, cities should try to expand, why we're not trying to expand into these areas and get some more of these land, get these large, you know, one, almost one and a half acre lots into the community for a tax base. Is that not a good enough reason to reject this?
It is not. I can cite you to several cases that would...
That won't be necessary. We've still got a big agenda left.
And if it was annexed into the city, there wouldn't be acre and a half lots.
Right.
They'd be quarter acre lots, and there'd be hundreds of them.
Plus, it's not in your sewer service area.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, if it's in the sewer service. If it's not, then I don't think we have much of an objection then, so. Thank you, Stan.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Nay.
Alderman Kowieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Okay, on our old business, we have an item that was brought back by request. Consider Act on Ordinance Annexing Territory located at North 55, West 36, 909 Lisbon Road to Mercier Property from the town of Oconomok. I'd like to give the ordinance its first reading.
I'd like to motion to give the ordinance its first reading.
Second. I want to just explain a little bit, and I think Stan wants to explain a little bit. This was requested to be put back on the agenda by Alderman Kowieski for reconsideration. Stan, you wanted to do an update?
I think that I prepared a memo, and I hope it got to you, maybe it didn't, but there's a misconception as it relates to Robert's Rules of Order and the Wisconsin law on placing matters on agendas. Municipalities could place matters on agendas fifteen times in a row, even if it was turned down, irrespective of Robert's Rules of Order. My memo said, after this came up the first time, I wasn't here, but after it came up the first time it was turned down, an alderman said that he wanted it back on the agenda. Perfectly appropriate to put a matter back on an agenda, period. It doesn't have to be a situation under Robert's Rules of Order, and frankly, if it was, it would have to have been put on the next agenda for reconsideration. So, you know, I've been involved with a lot of different issues that have been on, like, six or seven agendas over the course of a year, when, you know, you want to take a different look at it. So, perfectly appropriate, it's on the agenda, as if it was the first time. Yeah, it's a deal. Oh, yeah, I understand there, I'm sorry, there's been some talk about some different configurations here. You're dealing with the only, only what's in front of you. Don't talk about other possible, you know, configurations of what may or may not come in, because it's not in front of you, it's not pertinent. You're dealing with the annexation decisions, it's in front of you tonight, it would be inappropriate for our municipality to draw boundary lines. We're not going to do that because we can't. So, if the property owner wants to come in later and bring in more territory, that's up to the property owner. But what you have before you tonight, up or down, on the basis of the map that is being presented.
Okay. Seeing that, Alderman Kowieski wanted to bring this back, I'm going to turn it over to him. He's going to be the first one to talk.
So initially, I voted against this annexation. I had concerns regarding financial impact to the city, even though there's a pilot program that was proposed. I've done some research and discussion with Presbyterian Homes, and I think there's some additional information that can be shared to help alleviate some of those concerns, alleviated mine. There are some concerns in regards to islanding associated with this annexation. Granted, what our city attorney has just mentioned, there is some additional conversation about potential annexation of additional lands that the property owner had discussion with me and several other aldermen, which I think would, at least in my mind, alleviate the islanding concerns and put the city in a better position for potential road expansion for Lisbon Road, for road safety, which was a concern. In the plan as it stands, right now, there are turn lanes associated with this development, which will add to the road safety. And then one of the concerns that I had, that I discussed with the mayor and that were mentioned tonight, was workforce availability and the strain, or potential strain, that a development of this nature could put on existing businesses. And I think in my conversation with the mayor, workforce transportation was discussed last year. There are efforts with the county to develop a workforce transportation plan. Getting Oconomok involved in that type of program, I think, is beneficial, not just for projects like this, but for our service sector in general, which is really struggling to find employees in the pay range that they can sustain. And we have had conversation with other service providers in this market, specific to this particular project, with their challenges now. Part of what I didn't necessarily fully comprehend was the amount of staff required for this particular project, and the amount of staff associated with the service sector pay range is not significant, and that's up for interpretation, but it's about twenty-five to twenty-seven employees in that service sector pay range. So it's not significant enough in my mind to put a roadblock in this particular project. And finally, as an alderman, I think we all look at these projects and these requests in regards to need. Do we need another project of this nature? Do we need to go through an annexation to allow for that type of project? And it's my opinion, and the reason that I voted against it, wasn't because I didn't think there was a need, it was because of the financial impact, the road safety and the workforce availability. There is a need for this, and if we can address the financial impact with an MOU through the pilot program, through conversation, this organization has been participating in these programs, and they are in good standing since 1991. So they have a long track record of not switching their direction once agreed to, which is a positive impact to the city tax base, the type of project that this is, doesn't have an impact on our schools, which is why they don't pay into the school portion or part of it with the structure of the pilot program. And it also helps us as a city to recoup some of the infrastructure costs that's in the ground there now. So financially, it's, I believe, beneficial. The need for this type of project is going to continue to expand. The generation that this type of project serves continues to get larger every day. It's not going to go away. As that bubble goes through the system, it will be replaced by the millennials, which is the next largest generational segment of our population. So it's not going to be needed today, don't need it tomorrow. So long-term strategic acquisition for this type of project makes sense to me. And for those reasons, I wanted to bring this project back for discussion and reconsideration for annexation to allow this project to move forward.
Jeff?
I'd like to just add a little bit to that. When they were, we got the initial presentation, the skilled labor, the nurses and medical staff, numbers were fairly low just because of the fact that so much of this is assisted living and, or independent living, rather. And the one thing I've been saying, because I hear it all the time in this community, is the fact that we have some very good nursing homes in the area, but the independent living component for the elderly is lacking, and we sorely need that. So, a couple of things that I think the council probably should take into consideration when they vote on this tonight. We talked about the infrastructure. I don't, Joe, I don't know if you or Scott can address this, but I think because that was supposed to be annexed into the city, what's the assessment on that? Is it like over a hundred and thirty thousand, something like that?
A hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Okay.
Is what the water utility for the special assessment that they assumed would be brought into the city.
Okay, so the issue is not whether or not this should be built, because we could turn down the annexation, we could turn this whole thing down, and it could be built in the town of Oconomok. There's nothing that says it couldn't be built in the town of Oconomok. What do we lose? The special assessment, we would never get that money back. This would be done on private wells, and it would be done on septic systems. And the wells and septics are right next to a wetland, you know, a big wetland, right along the river. So when you look at the environmental impacts, and you look at the fact that we've already got a financial stake in that area out there, because we did anticipate that it would be annexed and be part of the city, to turn that down because you don't like the use or because of the traffic, it doesn't make any sense, because the same exact thing could occur, and it could be done in the town of Oconomok without any of our control. So, you know, as you think about this and as you vote on it, keep in mind the financial implications and the fact that this project could go ahead whether you wanted to or not, just whether it's in the city or not.
Okay. Kevin? So if I hear you proper, this project can still be developed, but not in the city, but in the town? And there's nothing to stop it?
If they chose to do it, they could develop it in the town. But they'd have to do it without city services. They'd have to do it with well and septic, which would, you know, they have that, that has its own impact. Charlie?
Yeah, I was opposed to this annexation at the last time that it came up, and I'm still opposed to it because I don't think this is a common sense way to grow the city of Oconomok by annexing this twenty-one acres on the south side of Lisbon Road, west of the Gulf Course. There's nothing else over there that's the city, other than one point of land on the other side of Lisbon Road, on the north side. And I just don't see it as a good way to grow the city. So I am still going to be opposed to this annexation.
Matt? I'll get back to you.
Yeah, I mean, I was in favor of it the first time around, and I understand one of Charlie's points, but typically on the edges of cities, there is kind of that hodgepodge grab of units as people bring stuff in, that does tend to happen on the edges and outskirts of cities and towns. So that's not completely unusual. I'll echo what Lou and Jeff said. Look, this project is going to be a big deal. I think it's going to be built no matter what. And I think it's, for, we have something else on the agenda later on, a resolution of necessity where we want to do something else in the city and spend more taxpayer dollars, and we're literally going to walk away tonight, potentially, from two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the water interceptor and just a potential pilot. And not to mention all the other money we're spending on the police station everywhere else. If there is a pilot, like all the other nonprofit entities in Oconomok do have and do pay, we would be crazy to walk away from that and just have the thing be built in the town with septic and water from the town in a well, and we take zero advantage of it. Look, I think these things are going to be, it's going to be a neat little development there. We do need some of this stuff. We don't, we do have assisted care, but we don't have a lot of independent care in town. And don't think of Oconomok just as Oconomok. I mean, these things do draw people from outside, and they come in, they spend time in town, maybe they go to a beer garden. But, you know, either way, these folks come in, right, and they spend money, they shop in the area, they stay in the area. I think we would be remiss to walk away from this at this point, and if the pilot does come in, I know we can't talk about it, but if the pilot were to be agreed to, and I think that's what they said at the last meeting, we're walking away from potentially millions of dollars, just because we don't like the hodgepodge look of it at this point. And other stuff around there will come into the city as things progress. Look, when their septics fail across the street on Mohawk Drive and their wells fail, those people are going to be dying to come into the city. And that's only going to, that's going to happen in fifteen, twenty years. So no one's going to want to put a new septic in for twenty grand when they can tie up to the city, and that's all out there already. So that's my big point. I think it's going to be an interesting project for the city, and we should move forward.
And just one comment, that's, you know, Alderman Shaw, that's how the city has grown throughout the years, is piece by piece by piece. Unless you have a border agreement with a municipality next to you, like we did with Town of Summit, you're not going to bring in a whole chunk like we did with Pabst Farms. You're going to bring in a piece here and a piece there, and that's just the way it is. Kevin?
Stan, so if I hear you right, what you said was, what we're voting on is what we had originally voted on last week, or two weeks ago.
That map that brought to you is what you're voting on, as if you didn't even take it up before.
And it seems as though there's nothing different.
There is nothing different.
Not a thing.
That doesn't mean there might not be something additional in the future.
Well, of course, but what we're voting on tonight is this.
That map. Lou?
The other potential use of development, if this developer decides not to move forward with the town, is additional residential in that area. The additional residential in that area would have a bigger impact in traffic and use of that area, which I don't think is necessarily what those residents in that area want to see. It was identified the last time this came forward that this particular development is pretty self-contained. They have entertainment there, they have restaurants there, you don't have a lot of ins and outs, and if it were to be developed in a residential format with higher number of units and greater density of population in that area, you're going to have more traffic, because they're not going to be self-contained in that area. They're going to, they're going to drive up and down Lisbon, that's going to be more of an issue. And I think in the direction that we're going with some of the ancillary conversation, the ability to widen Lisbon as a connector between the bypass and Highway P is going to play to a greater safety factor for our residents and visitors that come into town. So I'd consider, I'd like you to consider that potential alternate uses and the right development, the right need as this project would move forward.
Dirk?
For all the reasons Matt, Jeff, and Lou spoke about, I'm in favor of this. Somebody called me today and asked me, you know, what my position was on it, and I said, "Well, it's a place that is saying they're going to pay a pilot program that we can't really talk about," but it was talked about. But my big thing was, what's going to go there afterwards? Potentially, if we vote this down, the town could put high-density multifamily there, potentially. I don't know that they would, but I believe it's possible. That's going to bring a lot more traffic to that area at peak times than this would. I think it's a great setting for that, and I think it's a good thing for people in our community to have the benefit of as our population ages. I know my parents would appreciate a nice place like that if they had to have assisted living, and maybe I will someday, too, so.
Mike?
It just seems like you can't throw a stone without hitting an assisted living place. It just seems like you can't throw a stone without hitting an assisted living place. Just like that, everything's popped up all over the place. The other thing is, didn't they bring out that they were thinking, if it didn't pass, that they were thinking that they might bring back annexing the whole parcel?
You don't have to talk about that.
Oh.
Because we're only talking about this specific area right now. That would be something that they would have to do, a petition for the rest of the property, which could or couldn't happen. Tom?
I voted no the first time, several reasons. Most of it was the safety reason up in that area. It would've made my vote a lot easier this time if I would've known about something we can't talk about. But, you know, it's, after an earlier vote didn't go well earlier today, that now I'm sitting here thinking, whoa. And I agree that either we do it or the town's gonna do it. So that's my in-out, and all the people that I know that are in the business, and one way or the other, it's gonna happen. Matt, you were talking about, you know, some of these people might get downtown to the beer garden or whatever, and, well, they have enough trouble getting home without having any beer, you know, with their assisted living.
They have a bus out there.
They have a bus out there, okay.
Any other comments? Lou?
Mike, your comment about, you know, now you see these popping up everywhere. And I think you see this type of development because the demand is there. Again, the generation that is using, utilizing this type of development is growing, and it's not just growing short-term. It is a large demographic that we currently house within our city limits and will continue to house within our city limits, and they need this type of environment as they get older. I will. And our job as a city and as aldermen is not for planning for tomorrow, but is planning for weeks and months and years ahead. And I'd like to be able to keep my in-laws and if need be, keep my parents close with this type of facility, and as we continue to grow, this type of development will allow for that.
Jeff?
Just one last comment, and that is, you know, I heard the same thing about when Aurora was gonna add on and put that facility across from the hospital down there. The reality of it is, is if you talk to any of the institutions in town, the help is an industry issue. It's an industry issue. But if you ask them about their census or the available units, there's waiting lists. And so, again, the need is there. So I've said it for months, that's something we have to address in this community. We have a lot of people that need that.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the ordinance of the annexing the territory in the town of Oconomak. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw.
Nay.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Moving on, that's two thirds, seven out of eight. By the way, I should've mentioned that earlier, we did need six out of eight votes.
Dang, recall.
We remember that from last time, I think.
Call the mayor.
Under new business, first item is consider act and resolution of necessity for 336 West Wisconsin Avenue. We need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second. John?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular resolution necessity is directly related to the Lac La Belle Boat Launch Project. As part of the 2018 Long-Term Financial Plan, which was approved, we were looking to move forward with redevelopment of the boat launch at Lac La Belle, and one of those components was the acquisition of additional property to help meet the DNR parking requirements. So the resolution necessity is a requirement which allows staff to begin the process, to get appraisals, and move forward. We have an individual property owner who has expressed interest in having this dialogue about the potential sale, so the resolution's required for us to take the next step.
John? Any open discussion on this? Go ahead, Matt.
So I was, we have had some discussions. I wasn't necessarily originally in favor of this, but I think considering some of our other votes tonight, and what we're trying to do with expanding our downtown and the attractiveness of our downtown and our lakes, I think that's a good idea. So, you know, I can be convinced to change my mind very rarely.
Good, that's good. Other comments? Derek?
Asked if we acquire this, and there's people living there, I asked Attorney Larson if they'd be entitled to relocation benefits as part of it, and he said he didn't think so, but he wasn't sure, and I'm asking it again.
Isn't this vacant?
No, no, it's a house.
No.
I'd like to get it on the sell.
I anticipated that question, and potentially, yes.
Thank you. What's that?
Then we won't buy it.
Well, they can waive their rights, I believe, if they want to. But they are entitled to them, and they can ask for them.
Yeah.
I'll know that.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
What if they put up with a realtor? But they're going to.
And that's fine, but you are...
We're different than the average people. I deal with this a lot.
And, you know, I know it sounds crazy, but you are a municipality, and you have the right to pay. So you just can't, like, compete with Joe Blow across the street that wants to buy it. It's just the way it is.
Especially...
Constitutional right.
You also give up any rights if you don't follow the rules of any grants or funding later down the road. So we should do it by the book.
You have to, we'd always do it by the book.
Right. Now we do.
But what we're voting on tonight is just to allow us to get into a negotiation. This isn't anything beyond.
No, this isn't anything to do with purchase.
Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Next item is consider act and resolution disallowing claim from John Krukar. We need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
You have a really interesting situation here where you have put in some improvements, sidewalks, path, and there's a disagreement as it relates to what the right-of-way is up there. This property owner who bought the property is claiming that you're basically trespassing in some respects on this property. Brought a claim, I think to bring it to a head, we should go ahead and formally disallow that claim. However, I want to sit down with the lawyer for the property owner very, very soon and try to work our way through the issues that are associated with this. But no sense, you know, letting it drag out. Let's bring it to a head by disallowing the claim, and that way we can all get to work in a very, very short period.
Derek?
I guess, I feel more comfortable finding the details, but I guess what you're recommending, we disallow it and then work out the details later.
If we're going to talk about the details, then we must do so in close session.
We probably should do that at some point, then, right?
And we will discuss that as, once you, you know, after you've talked to the other attorney.
Right.
Yes, we will schedule that after.
Okay.
All right, so help me with this one. We're potentially going to approve a denial of something we know nothing about.
Okay, hold you.
What this does is this gets the process started for insurance purposes? It's a resolution to disallow the claim.
All it does is it shorts the time for them to bring a lawsuit.
Right.
And if you don't want to do that, that's fine.
The city, typically, this is the process we follow when we have claims that are presented that we start this with the resolution to deny the claim that starts the time clock ticking for their ability to file, you know, further action. And like Stan said, it brings it to a head, it gets us in the resolution stage to it.
Otherwise, this can drag on for, well, the statute of limitations on this is six years.
What if this is a, what if this is a valid claim?
Within six months.
We still have to...
What if this is a valid claim?
It probably is.
If it is, it doesn't change a thing.
We still have to take it to court, we still have to fight it.
No.
Then what are we voting for? We're denying something that ultimately...
We do not take this up, and we go into close session next time, so it's fine.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
So don't vote on it?
Do not vote.
Okay, we were not...
Well, I want, wait, we got a motion on the floor, don't we? I mean, I want to vote on it, I want to deny this claim and move it along. What's, I mean...
I agree.
I mean, we put in bike passes and some stuff, and this guy's claiming $250,000 damages. I mean, we're, our job is to protect the city taxpayer.
You can go ahead.
And, you know, we've got a, we've got a motion on the floor unless the motionees want to withdraw, and I'm one of them, and I don't.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the claim. Any other debate? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Okay, now we get on to the mayoral appointments for council committees announced. I will announce the, I will announce the appointments. There's no confirmation necessary on these appointments. Under Finance Committee, Alderman Swart will be chairman, Alderman Rosick secretary, and Alderman Schmidt would be a member. Personnel, Alderman Stray is the chairman, Ellis is the secretary, and Shaw is a member. Protection and Welfare, Alderman Rosick is the chairman, Alderman Miller is the secretary, and Alderman Shaw is a member. Public Services, Alderman Miller is the chairman, Alderman Swart the secretary, and Alderman Stray is a member. Utility, we have Alderman Shaw as the chairman, Kowieski as secretary, and Schmidt as a member. Library Board, Library Board is Alderman Rosick requested that one. Parks and Recreation, Alderman Kowieski and Alderman Miller. CDA would be Alderman Kowieski, and Police and Fire Commission would be Alderman Ellis. Do the rest of them? Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, Alderman Rosick and Finance, we're never gonna spend anything.
That's a good thing, right?
But he'll read about it in the library.
And at the beer tent.
Oh, yeah, in the beer tent. Pick up plenty of books.
Parking lot there.
Plenty of books down there, at the beer tent, well, you know, educate everybody.
Can I finish this, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Point to the following individual, and request the council's confirmation, the emergency management director would be Chief Berger. So we need a, do we need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second. And seconded, any questions? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Item 14 on the agenda, but we'll just, we'll skip that.
We're gonna jump ahead.
We'll skip that for now. Next item is election of council president by alderman, so we need nominations for the council president.
I nominate Charles Shaw for the high honor of president of our group.
Second.
Second. We have any other nominations? We need a motion to close the nominations?
We should.
We need a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Second. Nominations have been closed, the only person nominated was Alderman Shaw, so without objection, Alderman Shaw is the council president. Okay. Now, the election of council vice president by alderman, we need a motion for a vice, council vice president.
I would like to make a motion of Matt Rosick.
Second. We have a second?
I'm sorry, who's seconded that?
Rosick.
No. Oh, Mike, thank you. No, I got, I got the...
That was unintentional, right?
Second, do we have any other nominations for vice president? Seeing none, we need a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Second. Action, Alderman Rosick is now the vice president.
Thank you.
They have a lot of power consolidated over there.
It's right over here, this side.
Now we have a selection of council representative to plan commission by alderman, this is a ballot, correct, or no?
If, if there's only one.
Okay. We need a nomination, then, from council to select the representative to plan commission.
I nominate Derek.
Second. Alderman Swart.
Does he accept?
Any other nominations for plan commission?
He said he would.
He likes it.
Seeing none, we need a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Okay, without objection, Alderman Swart is the plan commission representative. I already did mine for government. Next one is mayoral appointment for Paff's Farms Joint Stormwater District. This is no confirmation is necessary for this. This is myself and Mark Frye are gonna be members of that, which we have been for the last couple of years. Next item is mayoral appointment to the WPPI Board. This is, again, no confirmation. Joe Pickard is the representative, and Sarah Kitzenball is the alternate. Okay, moving on to staff reports. We will have the rest of the committee nominations, not committee, but the different boards and commissions at the next meeting. I'm not doing this tonight. That will still be before any, any meetings, parking record, plan commission, anything like that, so any changes are, they'll all be done at the next meeting, which will be May 1st. So staff reports, tonight we have the Police Department annual report and update from Chief Berger.
Looking for the rifles.
You just upgraded, is it clapper now?
Ivan?
Yeah. Pretend it's a taser.
Uh-oh.
All right, so today we're gonna talk about the Police Department's annual report. At first, some statistics from 2017. Phone calls received by dispatch, we had 44,039 phone calls. That would include phone calls received by our clerk at the front desk during office hours. 911 calls for service, 3,410. Police officers had 18,007 calls for service within the city. Crashes, there were 490 crashes in the city. Our number one complaint in the city continues to be traffic enforcement, speed, traffic violations. School-related calls, 535 calls, the majority of which are handled by our school resource officer at the high school or at two middle schools. Patrol officers handle the other elementary schools. Arrests, which would include physical arrests, custody arrests, and citations for all violations, including traffic, we can't break that out, would be 7,442 arrests. OWI arrests in 2017 is 85. Mutual aid requests, where we assist neighboring agencies or other agencies, we had 305 mutual aid requests. And crime prevention presentations within the community, we did 34. 2017, as far as significant events went, was actually relatively quiet, which I appreciated. We did have, which was good, was our 2015 homicide investigation, the Van Wagner homicide, the suspect was found guilty. In 2017, our drug take-back program, our drug box, which is in the lobby of the Police Department, collected 600, about 650 pounds of drugs. And in various community partnership initiatives that we do, be it with the school, with Pro Health, we corrected, collected about 309 pounds of unwanted drugs. If you remember back in 2017, we joined the Lake Country Initiative Task Force, which addresses speed and OWI complaints. As part of that task force, there were 162 citations issued within the city. Couple of events from 2017 that we participated in as a police department, we did our annual shop with the cops, which we do at Christmas, feed the kids breakfast over at the community center, have Santa Claus there, put them on buses, and then we take them over to Kmart to shop. to shop. We had 28 children that participated. We also had National Night Out over in the campus parking lot, which was a huge success this year. And that's a picture of me on the dunk tank.
Really?
So it was actually, it was actually a good fundraiser for cop, shop with a cop. So it was very successful. I want to talk briefly about the Police Department's active assailant program. To educate our community and increase awareness in the unlikely event of an active assailant incident, the Police Department offers security inspections and recommendations to businesses, schools, daycares, whatever, policy development for those facilities, and staff presentation and training. Also, the Police Department has trained an active assailant since 2006. We train annually with neighboring departments, with our officers doing the majority of the training for all those departments. The reason we train with neighboring departments, if there were to be an active assailant situation, pretty much all agencies are going to respond to that situation. In addition to the training that we do as an agency, that we send our officers to additional specialized training. We have two officers that are active assailant instructors, have been through multiple training courses. They do roll call training in addition to our annual training. And we have three officers who are trained in what's called ALIS, which is Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. That's the equivalent of the Homeland Security's Run, Hide, Fight Training Program. ALIS is used quite a bit by schools now, and you're starting to find other locations that do that training. One of our goals is once we have the new police station built, and we have a community room to open up to the public to educate them as to what they can do as individuals if they're at shopping centers or businesses and there's an active assailant situation. 2018 significant events, it's been a relatively busy year for us so far. If you remember back in 2017, we assigned an officer to work part-time with the Waukesha County Metro Drug Unit one day a week. He's worked with the town of Oconomak for about eight months on investigation, and just recently, they executed a traffic stop, which resulted in a grow-up operation where the suspect had 40 pounds of marijuana in his house. He was charged with several, several felonies. In 2018, the homicide case from 2016 on West Wisconsin Avenue would be Labor Day weekend. Defendant pled guilty to first degree intentional homicide. And then our last active land bias case from 2015, which also occurred on West Wisconsin Avenue, our detectives just recently concluded that investigation and resulted in the suspect being charged with first degree reckless homicide. Talk briefly about our taser, which is actually considered a conductive electrical weapon and less lethal munitions. Taser was implemented in 2010. Since that time, we have deployed or displayed the taser 45 times over the past seven years. Our experience is, once an officer displays his taser, we usually gain compliance. So it's very successful. In 2017, actually just this past week, we introduced an intermediate impact weapon, being a kinetic energy impact projectile, a beanbag. We conducted training in that this past week. If you see the pictures, these are part of our training, was actually conducted in the sentry building. What the beanbag is, it is a one-ounce bag filled with very small BBs that's discharged from a shotgun that is used as an impact weapon. Example of how we would use that would be if you had a suicidal subject holding a knife, which is technically a deadly force situation if he steps towards you. We could use the beanbag projectile to disarm that person or persuade them to drop the knife. And then coming soon, as soon as we can work out the logistics, we'll be doing coffee with a cop, where officers will periodically meet with residents, just have an impromptu meeting at a coffee shop for an hour or two and discuss what they like to talk about, and then our new police station, hopefully. Any questions?
Questions for the chief, Charlie?
On your active assailant program training for that, does that occur in the schools?
Typically, it's in the school. We have had some businesses that have expressed interest and let us do the training there, but typically, it's at the schools, the intermediate schools, or the high school.
Any other, Tom?
I've gone through that ALIS training up at the high school. It's quite, quite intense, and, you know, we got to get them girls from not getting so scared. I was trying to do what I could. And then as far as like your citations, your tickets, is that at a different time? Like, is there a, how you doing as far as like tickets year to year? Like, the other chief used to have a whole list of them, like down or up or...
I'd say we're consistent. We may be a little higher this year.
Oh, good, because we need to pay for the sentry buildings.
I'm sorry?
We need to pay sentry buildings, so do it up a little more.
And I want to comment on the ALIS training, as long as Alderman Stray brought it up, is I believe April 30th, we're conducting ALIS training with the school. We'll be doing individual classes, and we'll be doing an activity in, I think we're doing it at the auditorium on ALIS training as well, so.
Jeff?
And chief, again, outstanding job every year. I know you got more and more stuff, but I want to congratulate you and your staff. And I'd also like to compliment you personally because you're adding a lot to the department, new stuff every year, new ideas, and I think it's to the benefit of the community. I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Matt? Yeah, chief, great job. Thanks for the presentation. Hey, I do have one real quick question, and just something that came into my mind today. You guys take the drugs back, but what about somebody that, you know, says, hey, my kid's got a gun, and he's, you know, we have these kids steal the guns from parents or purchase guns that are mentally ill. I mean, what happens if someone calls the Police Department, says, there's somebody in my house, and they probably shouldn't have a weapon? Is that a call that you make, or is there a place for someone to take a gun like that and drop it off?
They can turn the police, the gun into us for safekeeping.
Okay.
Then it sort of becomes a shell game as far as how long we can keep that gun from that person. Because if a person has mental health issues, unless the court adjudicates them as having certain issues, there's really nothing we can do as far as the gun goes. It's sort of a crack in the system that needs to be fixed.
Interesting, okay.
Luke?
As, as the head of our, the department that enforces our laws, and one of our primary responsibilities as a municipality, you're doing a fantastic job. And I truly appreciate that. One of the things that you mentioned is, one of the consistently high things you deal with, speeding and, and traffic. Do you need, or would you feel it would be beneficial to have more speed monitoring devices that, you know, identify how fast you're going? And they tend to slow traffic down a little bit when they see that it pops up that you're doing 42 and a 25?
Well, we currently have two speed boards, as we refer to them, and we can monitor speed, and we can record speed. This time of year, typically now through December, they're up continuously, move from location to location. We have a waiting list, you know, it's cost prohibitive, you're looking at $5,000 to $6,000 to purchase a new one.
They're effective, though?
They're effective, yes.
One other quick thing, chief. Next time you guys get uniforms, can you get your flags on the right, going in the right direction on your sleeves, please?
So it says the military, man.
Any other comments? Thank you, chief, for excellent presentation. Any other staff reports? No other staff reports? Reports and comments from Alderman? Jeff?
Yeah, other than complimenting the chief, I did want to make an announcement. Last year was a pretty tough year for our family, and it's, kind of was hard for us to do any traveling or anything else, and for me to spend much time up north at our place up north. So I thought about it real hard, and as of the beginning of May, I'm quitting all of my other part-time jobs, and since this is the last meeting of April, I am resigning from city council. I'm going to be doing some more traveling this year and spending a lot more time up north. I will not be, as I'm finding out, I'm not as available for constituents as I should be to look into problems when I'm out of town now. So I think it's only fair to, to the constituents to step down, step aside. And I want to say that I really appreciate the council and the staff the city has, and everything the mayor has done, and thank you very much. But I'm going to move on with a different part of my life and enjoy retirement, so.
Any other comments? Reports and comments for the mayor. I have something on here, but I want to thank Jeff for all of his hard work. He's, he's been one of the good Aldermen. We have, all of our Aldermen are good, but he's had a... Jeff has had a good insight to the city, having worked for the city for, for a number of years as an officer, as, as part of the Police Department. And coming back to work as an Alderman, that's, that's not easy to do when you, you've already dedicated a lot of your life to the city, then you come back and do it again. That shows his dedication to what he, what he believes, and I think he's always been one that's been very level-headed and saw things for the good of the city. And we're going to miss you. I really appreciate you. The other item I wanted to report on, we had a committee of the whole meeting, and this is our 10th anniversary of our sister city relationship with Dietzenbach, Germany. And the last, when they were here, we were there 10 years ago for the signing of the documents. Mayor Sullivan went over there to sign the documents. This year is their 10th anniversary, so they're going to be making a visit here. We had a discussion at Committee of the Whole for some limited funding. We also had met with the Tourism Board, which has voted to contribute a third of the funding, and the city will donate the other two-thirds, for a total of $3,000 between the two entities. It gives us the chance to provide them with transportation, events, other items that they will be here. Hopefully, we haven't worked out the final details of when they'll be here, but we're hoping it'll be sometime in August for celebration of the 10th anniversary. So that's my one comment on that. The other item is, I'd like to thank all the people that came out to vote two weeks ago. I know the weather wasn't the greatest. We did have a very good turnout. It was just under 40%, which is good for an off-year election. And I hope to keep things going the way we've done over the last two years, little two and a half years. I think we've made a lot of progress. There's some more things that we need to get done, and I look forward to the next couple of years to really move forward and get a lot of projects done, and keep Oconomak the way it is. It's a great place to live, work, and play. That's all I have. Next item is, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Move in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.